Okay, thank you. All right, now we're in business. So the meeting has started 6:05. First order of business is the Sean Grant application. Mr. Cates, would you want us to make a determination on this at this point? It has been tabled the application. Is it safe to assume we have to move forward on this? Okay, Mr. Cates, can you, if you're talking, you're on mute.
I apologize. You think eventually I'd remember to do that. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we would like to proceed tonight. I think the board has received a letter from Jeff Allen from AE Hodgson that's dated July 26, 21, which Jeff can explain, but we're essentially seeking a waiver from the operation of part of the ordinance here tonight. And we were hoping that the planning board will act on that. Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. And they spoke for several minutes on mute, so we're on the same boat, so let's keep going. I'd be happy to view on first order business. So we should not table this any longer. So I would entertain a motion to re- activate, if you will, this application. Okay, so it's the motion. We have seconded. Any more discussion? Okay, so all those are favors, so we'll do a roll call vote. So this would be to activate the tabled applications for Sean Grant. Pete just came in, I know. So it had been tabled, so we're saying, yeah. So are you all set? So we're just activating. That's all we're doing. It had been tabled. So, you know, so George?
Yes.
Yes, one of the favor. Pete?
Yes.
And Sarah?
Yes.
And we have a full board, so Rich is an alternate. I would not ask you for a vote, but we need, I would ask you. I'm in favor, so five in favor, none opposed. It's now activated, so we can make a determination on this one. Okay, so getting back to the beginning of this, we had there are several things to maybe discuss. At the start of this, since the focus is to, as Mr. Cates brought up, was to get to for a waiver, I think we should probably talk about that part first. We did receive the email that came from Jeff Allen, and I wanted to make sure that we discuss this right now. So waivers wouldn't be part of what this planning board can do. It's sentence statute.
I thought the planning board could give orders.
Not under shoreline zoning.
Correct. I have a question. Sure. Was there a waiver then? Is there any waiver down in the village in the past, the past thirty years for shoreline zone application? In the village, you would do the showing.
Variants is granted, but not waivers.
And, okay, so I got a question, going back to a number of years ago, where the center, where the Hobie Center there? The lakes?
Among the no reason?
No.
Among the lakes?
Lines. Yeah, that line, yeah, yeah. So what kind of application, you know, the building has been burned down, is vacant for quite a while. And then an application was put forth, the planning board. And was that a commercial application? Or, I don't have it in front of me, but my red place was. So it was a commercial application? Yeah. So was there a variance down in that particular one? I believe there was, actually, a written request. Again, I don't have it in front of me, but I think there was. 2010. Notice of commercial development review decision, June 21, 2010. And I gotta talk you through this. There you go. And you, Chairman, you signed it? Yep. Okay. So you're saying is that time, because there was a commercial application, the waiver was granted, and it was in shoreline zoning. So that had nothing to do with it. I just need some clarification of that, please. So what you're pointing to is a waiver in a commercial? I'm reading that, yeah. Yep. But it's in shoreline zoning too. Yep, true. I guess to the best of my recollection at the time, the commercial development review allowed for waivers in that one. If we that's, I think, what we were pointing to at that point. Number eight, let's see. Looks like there is.
Is there extra parts of that?
I, yeah.
There's something that we have a chance to review or any of this before the new.
Yeah, Secretary, you can get it, but.
And, and I guess I would just say this, because in the interest of time, if we have made a mistake in the past about doing something in a shoreline zoning application, and that happened in one place, the ordinance that we have in front of us, which we're acting on for this particular application, if we had, if we had an error in approving the waiver, which shouldn't have been done, there's no reason that we would continue to do that with the ordinance now. Okay, may I just say, I think it's case history, case history law, statute law, case history, so precedent has been set. No, I don't agree at all. I mean.
Maybe attorney, but you want to be.
Sure.
We need self attorney on that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would just say this, if we made a mistake in the past about approving something that should not have been approved in the shoreline zone, there's no reason on earth we would need to perpetuate the same mistake going forward.
So then we just, in a central area zone, we just gave them a waiver for the screening and stuff, so in actuality, we just gave them a waiver.
In.
Under the commercial development.
Under the commercial development.
Two different standards.
Mr. Chairman, I don't mean to interrupt. I apologize. I just, before you decide what you are not going to do, I'd just like an opportunity to weigh in at the appropriate time. I'm just not sure when that is. Thank you.
Thanks. I'll call you in a minute. I want to make sure we're clear on the path we're going to.
Thank you.
Let's say, we have a commercial development review ordinance and a shoreline zoning ordinance. The commercial development review ordinance allows for waivers if they, you know, the board agrees that whatever their rationale is, is valid. Shoreline zoning does not have any provision for waivers to be granted, only variances, which are only granted by the Board of Appeals. We have no authority to grant a waiver or a variance on the planning board. And whether or not the planning board made a mistake back in 2010, as Peter said, two wrongs don't make a right. We have to deal with this under shoreline zoning ordinance, as it stands today.
Okay, so thank you, Rich. George, you have something?
Nothing to add. Yeah. I was gonna say, let's stay focused on the shoreline zoning application before commercial development on this site and others, you know, that's a whole different kettle of fish. We need to act on the application that we have before us and give the applicant an opportunity to make their case.
Yep, exactly. So thank you. So, do we answer your question?
Yeah, I guess. Whereabouts in here is it? Doesn't the comprehensive plan suggest that we should have businesses in this area? It says village distinctly, and the whole village is in shoreline zoning. So.
It does.
You know, shouldn't we be able to act on this?
Act on the question, yeah. We can't prove that. In other words, my opinion is that there's no way that we can say yes to this.
Me, the planning board versus the Board of Appeals. The ordinance on page sixty-eight clearly gives the authority for any decisions about variance appeals to the Board of Appeals. Not, we have no jurisdiction whatsoever until we can, and the applicant, you know, until they're agreed, meaning, you know, a decision's made by this board denying the application, they have no ability to go to the Board of Appeals.
Yep. And then on page sixty-nine and on.
Sixty, sixteen and seventy-five. Actually, there's sixty-eight and sixteen on the third.
Yep.
So why does it talk about waivers? Because variances and waivers are two different factors.
Correct.
There's no such thing as a waiver.
So there's no such thing as a waiver in shoreline zone? And so what also, what you would also probably need to point out is that main statute talks about that explicitly for the planning board, that there's no authority for this board to grant a waiver in shoreline zone. So, having said that, we're focused on shoreline zone. Mr. Cates, are you with us?
Yes, sir, I am.
We're focused here on the shoreline zoning part of this, right? What did you have to say tonight about this?
Thanks for the opportunity. First of all, I totally agree. A variance and a waiver are two very different things. And the planning board has no authority to consider variances. Those are, the original jurisdiction for those is, as several people have now said, the Board of Zoning Appeals. We're not seeking a variance. And in part, the reason we're not seeking a variance is because we couldn't get one, because the definition of the variance would require us to show that, that if we don't get the permit here, that there is essentially no useful economic use to be made of the property. That's not true here. We couldn't make that argument effectively, and we're not asking the planning board to grant a variance. We are seeking a waiver, however, and I agree that there is nothing specific in the shoreline zoning ordinance that says that you can give them, but on the other hand, there's nothing that says you can't either. And I'd like to make a brief argument about why it's appropriate here and cite past precedent, not for the the fact that two wrongs make a right, but that previous planning boards have in fact recognized that as long as the as long as the basic goals of the shoreline zone ordinance are met, that it's appropriate to grant a waiver. So for here, we should remind ourselves that the grants already have a home occupation permit operating fully in the shoreline zone, and that grandfathered use will continue. This board should make sure, and I think you're respectfully suggest your primary focus should be to make sure that there is no further burden to the shoreline zone, and that your main task here is to protect the shoreline zone. That's the whole reason for the ordinance. But as Jeff Allen pointed out in his July twenty-sixth letter to you, Brightside's proposed commercial use won't have any additional impact whatsoever within the shoreline zone, and there'll be no additional burden environmentally to the portion of this entire property. Keep in mind that there's a much larger piece of property here. It won't have any further impact on the portion of the land which the grant zone, which is, which is within two hundred and fifty feet of water. So if we look at the substance of the ordinance, granting a waiver here would be completely consistent with the goals of the ordinance, which again, I don't mean to keep hammering on this, but they're to protect the shoreline zone. It can create additional commercial activity granting this permit, an additional tax base, which are part of the goals of the comprehensive plan, and be, still be environmentally sound, and we think it is. As you've discussed a little bit already, I think there's ample precedent for granting waivers here, just as you have done in other situations, and referring back to that 2010, when the Belgrade Lakes Association was specifically granted a waiver from certain very clear dictates of the ordinance requiring vegetative cover. That's in the shoreline zoning, not in the commercial zoning ordinance, but the shoreline zoning ordinance. You have to have a certain percentage covered by vegetation, and the board found that it was appropriate to waive that requirement, that shoreline zoning requirement in that particular case. So, and then in addition to that, in 2010, the Resource Center was granted a waiver from the road setback requirement. And again, that's the road setback requirement of the shoreline zoning ordinance, not the commercial ordinance. The board thought it was appropriate to grant a waiver, because neither of these things were going to have any negative impact on the shoreline zoning land. The other example goes, I want to mention, goes even further back, Mr. Chairman, to July of 2002. There, the applications was filed by Mike and Louise Poole for Belgrade boat rentals, and the proposal was to build two storage buildings. That property, like this property here, was partly in the shoreline zone and partly out of the shoreline zone. Despite that, the planning board decided not to consider invoking the strict dictates of the shoreline zoning ordinance, because again, similar to the Belgrade Lakes Association case, and similar to today's case, there wasn't going to be any additional commercial activity within the shoreline zone. And that, again, is basically the situation we have here, because the grants in Brightside are proposing no commercial, no additional commercial activity within the shoreline zone. So just as the planning board waived the ordinance's application when it came to Belgrade boat rentals, and just as they did with respect to the Belgrade Resource Center, again, in cases where the shoreline zone was completely protected, we respectfully suggest that you can do the same thing here, and in fairness, we ask that you do do the same thing here. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Cates. Okay, so let's get to this. As was pointed out, the authority to grant variances or waivers for zoning variances, this is spelled out in the statute. And this says quite clearly that the statute gives the Board of Appeals the sole authority to grant zoning variance. I'm no lawyer, you know, I'm just trying to go with the of us. I understand what has been said about previous things that may have occurred in the past in the town of Belgrade, especially where it has been complicated, where a some activity has taken place both in the shoreline zone and outside of it for a property in both commercial development review ordinance as well as shoreline zone ordinance may apply. But as I understand it, based on what I'm reading here, this does not fall to us. It just doesn't. It's the Board of Appeals that does it. I don't know what else to say.
The Board of Appeals doesn't handle waivers.
They handle variances.
Variances from our waivers.
True. We don't have a waiver either.
According to this law that's listed here, thirty in RSA, and then the subsection of it talks about it. Well, so Rich said, well, this board, planning board doesn't handle waivers. Well, the attorney just stated that 2002, it did back then, and again, 2010, which I brought up before, again, handled a waiver, and so.
They may have made, I think they made a mistake if they granted waivers.
We got two mistakes.
My twenty-four years as shoreline zoning coordinator, it was always, you cannot grant waivers. The only thing that shoreline zoning warrants, and when towns granted waivers, we went off to the town about that. Basically said we can't do. Who's waiting? DEP.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. Can I just ask a point of clarification here? Those of us who are, those of us who are not with you physically can't tell who's speaking there in the room. So if we could request that people identify themselves would be real helpful. Thank you, and sorry for the interruption.
Thank you. Yeah. So, Rich Baker, you're talking about DEP approached a town in a particular instance?
Could not grant waivers under the shoreline zoning ordinance, only variances. And that was something that we stressed to towns as part of our.
George?
Mr. Cates has presented the facts of those two cases, one going all the way back to 2002. I wouldn't be surprised if there are others that us or prior planning boards made mistakes on. But the idea that we're going to perpetuate our mistakes is really appalling to me. The as Rich put it succinctly, you know, two wrongs don't make a right. At some point, you got to get it right.
Yep.
And let's start now.
You know, to be very, this is Peter, so to be very open and honest, you know, about this whole thing, this is a volunteer board. We donate hundreds of hours. All we're trying to do is do the right thing for the town. If we made mistakes in the past, I am sorry that has happened, but it doesn't mean we should continue to do so. I think our goal is to continue to improve our process and do that the best we can. So that's my take on it. So, having said that, do you have something to say about this?
I just was curious if the planning board doesn't provide waivers and supposedly the appeals department doesn't apply the waiver. Who does?
If you want to talk about some, something called a variance, the appeals board can deal with that. That's spelled out in our shoreline zoning application, our shoreline zoning ordinance, which you can get online for free. Go to page sixty-eight, sixty-nine, and that spells it out very clearly. But I understand what you're saying, because if no one does one, right, and then you're trying to turn to another group to say, well, can you do it? Then someone says, no, they can't do it either, but no option. What I want to make sure you know is that there are variances that are allowed through the appeals board. Page sixty-nine talks about it.
I mean, part of the problem, we're sealed, again.
Peter, your own name is on a waiver. I mean, come on. You know, there also has to be fair play. You can say, oh, we screwed up in the past. Well, I've screwed up in my past too, but goddamn dude, you know, you've got to give everyone the fair shake. You know, okay, jeez, we screwed up then, so we can't ever again. I'm sorry, but there has to be a level of fair play, and that is what's going to be pushed to the limit in this situation.
Thanks, Sean. George?
Going back to the ordinance, let's stay focused on the ordinance. What authority do we have? What does the ordinance grant this board and the Board of Appeals authority to make decisions on?
Has the exact same authority it had in the past.
Excuse me? You're not talking right now. George is trying to make a point.
I was just gonna say.
I was, I was talking.
I was just gonna say, there's no place in the ordinance where the word waiver even appears. Not in the shoreline zoning ordinance, and that is not untypical of the ordinances in general. Again, the process that's provided to applicants, if they are unable to meet the standards of the ordinance, is to seek a variance from that standard. Our ordinance does one in the same, does exactly that. That's why the process moves on to the Board of Appeals. It isn't our decision to make on this case or any others like it.
Rich, also to kind of go along with that is section sixteen two, just called variance appeals. H two A says variances may be granted only from dimensional requirements, including but not limited to lot width structure, right, centralized coverage, setback requirement. So it's, I guess, if nothing else, it's pointing that that's what you get variances for, you apply for variances for dimensional requirements. You don't apply for waivers, and as Stuart said, waivers are not even mentioned in the variances.
And lastly, I, just again, towards Sheila, I just am really uncomfortable if we're going to start making up the rules as we go.
Would someone like to see a copy of a waiver that has been signed by the planning board of the town of Belgrade? I happen to have one sitting right on my desk. Waiver, no V word, W word.
So.
I can forward it, shall I? Who's email is the quickest to get it to?
I would argue it's not necessary, because we need to go by, not the past, but what we know is correct.
Correct.
And we're going to push the fairness thing, my friend. That's what we're going to show.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna say Pete's already provided a copy of the 2010 decision. The wrongness as it might have been.
Okay, so the request was for a waiver. We talked about how this board does not have that authority to do so, that a variance would be dealt with by another board. For this particular application that we have in front of us, there is also probably a determination so that the applicants could then take some kind of action on their own after whatever it is we decide, so they would have some way to respond to that and then go to that next step. So if, for example, this were denied, going to the appeals board, where the variance would be in there, that would be in their court, right? But they can't do that unless we act upon this this application.
I'd like to make a look.
Go ahead.
Does this board consider the applicant's request for us to make a decision on a waiver?
On a waiver?
I think that's the reason for this meeting, the waiver.
Okay.
So Mr. Pat, explain.
Yeah, so your motion is to, for this board to consider a waiver.
Tonight.
Tonight. Okay. Do we have a second? Okay, so you've made a motion to consider a waiver, right, and then seconded it. And it seems like what we've also talked about is whether this board has the authority to do so. I've pointed out that main statute says that we do not. So I believe that we do not have that authority to do so. So this is my discussion point on this. And so I would not be in favor of voting for waiver. Just letting you know how I feel about it. Right, and we got to write a point that waivers have been granted before in 2010, and then the attorney here said 2002. I haven't read that one. And.
Great.
So, and the attorney of the seven, two thousand seven matter, saying, point rather, that every town does encourage development, and this was definitely an economic gain here for the applicant and for the town too. All right, so, and ordinance is involved here, shoreline zoning, commercial, and it's a mix, so there's room to make it for us to make the decision to come up and talk about a a waiver, and that's what we're doing here, and I think we can consider that.
Excuse me.
Mr. Rushton?
Go ahead.
I, I had, sorry, I had my hand up for a while. I wanted to respond to Rich Baker's, um, comments on the D E P. The, the, um, application and minutes for the, um, Belgrade boat rentals does reflect his, um, explanation as to why that that waiver could be granted in that the shoreline zoning was not affected. And that, that was, I'm assuming that was, it said he was the D E P. I assume he was not on the planning board that he was representing as the E P. So there's a precedent for that as well.
Okay, thank you.
So I wouldn't mind saying that if, uh,
so.
I'd be happy to forward that packet.
Do you want her to forward that to you?
I would like to see what's.
So, so Samantha, could you forward that to Rich, please?
To the town office.
Oh, I'm sorry, go to the town office. I'm sorry. So, so George?
Um, I was gonna just wanna respond to Pete's suggestion, uh, in terms of my own perspective, in essence, um, following through on, on Pete's suggestion is we would be establishing new standards in the ordinance tonight, not through the normal legal process by which ordinances are to be developed and voted on by the voters. It isn't our decision or our authority to establish new standards in this ordinance as we go. And that's what we should be doing by erosion factors that are not currently in the ordinance, making up the rules as we go, which is, you know.
Didn't that already happen?
It was, as it is.
So Sarah, are you following what's, what we're talking about?
I'm following what's going on and, uh, I actually went, I went, uh, let the applicant know that I took the time to go back to all the previous meetings related to this, the commercial application that was done and read back and forth both ordinances. And unfortunately, I, yeah, I have to agree with, um, Mr. Seal and Mr. Rushton. I, I, he's the only guy I have had. I'm new. I'm new to the board and the only guy that I have to make a decision is, is that. And I'm not gonna go against what is dealing with this.
Thank you very much for your comments.
I really, I really, really tried to see how I can square in to make it happen that way, but it's with the information that I have in the packet and, uh, and the ordinance, I don't, I don't see how we can work this out, uh, and not being, not putting myself and, and the, the, uh, planning board in a legal wedge, so to speak.
We already are. Yeah, we may be.
I'm doing my best faith.
I know it.
It's all I can, all I can do.
So we had a motion on the floor to consider a waiver. It's been seconded. We've had some discussion on this. Is there any more discussion? So Pete's, uh, motion was to consider the waiver. So all those in favor of considering the waiver? George?
No.
Pete?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Sarah?
No.
I vote no. So that's three against, two in favor. Motion does not pass. Okay, so therefore, if the waiver is not gonna be part of this discussion, request for a waiver. I think it's incumbent upon us to act on this application so that the applicants can then take the next step, which I think would be to go to the Board of Appeals, I believe. Um, does the board agree in terms of the process going forward, how to do this? It's been a long, painful thing.
What's the process?
The thing now is to, I, I think we're in a spot now where we say, um, whether or not we want to, um, approve or deny the application that was before, that had been tabled, right, and then activated tonight. And if it were denied, then they, then the applicants would have a way to go to the Board of Appeals to look for variance. That's the way I understand it at this time. George?
Just for everybody's benefit, I would just point out that we've been provided not only with, um, the information from the applicant and their engineer and attorney, but what we have, um, before us in our packet, the legal opinion that we received on July first from the town attorney representing the town's interests. Um, and well, as the application itself, uh, including the lot size information and other permanent, uh, facts. So we have all that before us that we need to move forward on making a, a decision on the application itself.
So do you, do you want, are you suggesting that we go kind of air out those?
No, I just wanted to lay that out, that we have all that information before us. Most of it is just re, you know, providing us with the, and to us previously. And, uh, so I, I think we're, we can move forward with finding the fact law.
Okay. Let me get to eight. Let's start with that one. So we're gonna create a, uh, findings of fact document for this.
Mr. Rushton?
Uh, go ahead, Samantha.
Sorry, I, I know you probably can't see me when I have my hand up. I just wanted to add in the last round of commercial applications, the Board of Appeals expressed some concern that that was not an appropriate use of, um, denying an application to get a variance was not, a number of them expressed that it was not an appropriate use, um, that it shouldn't, it should have gone through the planning board. That was just a, a discussion that a number of them had, just saying that, that, that denying an application so that, uh, variance could be, or a waiver could be presented was not what the appeals board was for. But that's, that came from them in discussions.
Okay, thank you. Um, so relative to this, I, I, I believe we would still need to go through the findings of fact for this application, right? Right, this is, this is something we need to be able to do. So, hang on.
Chair, Peter?
Sean.
Hey, could I have a couple of minutes with my attorney on our cell phones?
Sure. Do you want us to proceed, um, going through the findings?
Just give us a couple of minutes to communicate via text. I'll be, we'll be right back with you guys.
Okay, yep.
Thank you.
Um, so I'm not doing anything relative to going through the process other than filling in the administrative things like the applicant name, the address, the tax map lot, just stuff like that. So. There's some. Let's see, address for that. Tax map and lot.
Twenty-six and lot. The application says fifty-eight, but I believe that is only partially correct because the site drawing has it on fifty-seven and fifty-eight.
I'm gonna shut it. Sorry, good, lots, fifty-seven and fifty-eight. Okay, so before we begin to the conclusions of law, the applicant's on date, uh, applied for shoreline permit for, this is the project details, so this was for change of use from home occupation to commercial.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Cates.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I just talked to my, to my clients and, and here's what we're gonna ask you to do tonight. Because we're trying to see the, you know, the best path forward here is we're gonna ask you to consider tabling this matter tonight. We, we think we may, um, be submitting a, a, an amended motion to amend the commercial application or amended commercial application permit to try to, um, approach this in a different way. Um, and, and so we'd like some time to consider that. Um, we clear, we understand what you just did. We get it. But we, we want to consider some alternative way of approaching this. And rather than tie up your time tonight, we're gonna ask you to table it because I think what we're gonna, the way we're gonna approach it may avoid having you to go through all this time going through the findings.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cates. Just wanted to mention for your consideration, I think that the town's attorney had, um, presented some information that would provide a path forward, um, at one point. Was that the July first, first, I believe? So that might be up for your consideration going forward. I'm not sure. I'm not trying to say one way or the other, but just something to consider.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We'd like to look at that.
We'd like, we'd like to look at that and, and we appreciate where you're coming from tonight, but to, to I, I think it may be a waste of your time to go through another long period of, of looking at all of those, um, findings of fact. And if you could just table it, we maybe will be able to avoid that.
Okay, so we'll, that, we'll consider this an official, an official request to table the application once again, and I'm seeing it. So if that's the case, I would entertain emotions to table this application.
I make a motion to table the right side, um, of commercial, commercial shoreline.
Thanks, Craig. Do we have a second? I said, in second. Any more discussion on this? Roll call votes. Are those in favor of tabling the application? George?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
I'm in favor, five in favor and none opposed. It's been tabled. Mr. Cates, um, it has been tabled. Your considerations and perhaps revisions.
Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Good night.
No, thanks.
Okay, so I'm going to save this. That's sound. Okay. For business here, I think next up, uh, we had is the, Craig?
Yep.
Could you help me, help me with your last, which one is it correctly?
Well, Pat.
Pat?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, you're here, Ryan Eldridge, Bank of Alabama Masters. Great. Thank you for, for being here tonight. Let's see, just scrolling down to your applications, because it looks like what you wanted to do was, there are a couple of cabins down there. Um, you want to add some square footage to the cabins and remove a couple of trees that are problematic trees. Is that correct?
Correct.
Awesome.
Hmm?
Let's see. Do you want to take us through what you want to do a little bit and describe some things? Because I know we have from the application package, some, some diagrams and there's some distances uh, to the lower high water mark. So I'm sure the board will probably ask some questions about how far things are, what you propose to do, height of roof, all that jazz. So take it away.
Yeah, so, um, Craig applied to us, uh, we really loved this, uh, application. A lot of history there. It's a beautiful piece of property. Um, it's actually a real amazing piece of property, beautiful beach, and then the history was quite intriguing. A lot of old pines, but the buildings were in really rough shape. So I'm calling the nicest cabin, um, cabin one, and that's kind of the main residence. That cabin already has, um, septic holding tank there, and correct me if I'm wrong, Craig, that is already designed to, has a force main that pumps into and exists. That gets, into the distance reach here. Um, there's also already a power drop there. Um, see that on the drawings? Um, building two over to the left is in pretty really rough shape. Um, some of it is savable, but, um, that one, that one needs a lot of help. Um, both still buildings right now sitting in dirt and, uh, they're very dangerous and actually quite a bit of a eyesore. Um, so building one, we would have proposed to get out of the dirt, maybe a foot or two on insulated concrete pads. Same exact footprint, we would only increase the volume of the roof pitch a little bit for snow load and that would be below the twenty-foot mark. Um, other than that, it'll be just fixing a raw, fix the sails, uh, new, new electrical. New sheeting, new windows, et cetera, new roof. Um, building two would be a little more complicated. That would be a pretty much, um, salvage job. You know, we can salvage a bunch of materials there, but we'll have to rebuild a new platform in the exact same spot. And we do propose to, uh, double the size of that, size of that, going away from the lake. Again, um, not to go over twenty feet. Um, I would think that it would probably match the other one and be about nineteen, yeah, well, eighteen, nineteen feet. And then there'll be a main area in, in the middle. Uh, there are a couple dying trees and there are two really, really big tree trees in front of cabin two that, uh, yeah, they threaten that. And of course, we do the, um, P B R with the close, you know, putting in vegetation and whatnot and, uh, go through our erosion control plan correctly.
That it needs right now erosion control because driveway coming down every time we get a high rain, it just washes right into the way. So I thought you'd chase around it and says you gotta divert it and fix that problem.
Great. Yes. Um, could, could I ask a question?
Of course.
At this point?
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, cabin two is probably the most problematic one.
By far, yeah.
Um, and it sounds like you'd be able to salvage some materials. So is it expected that you're basically taking it down, salvaging some material and then try to rebuild in place? Is that, is that what I'm hearing? Um, and the only reason why I ask that is because in the, in the ordinance talks about if there's a chance, or, tell me if I'm going down the wrong path, anybody. But if there's a chance to move back to the greatest practical extent, that's a phrase that's in there.
Which I don't know what, how far the lot goes back or.
So.
Yes, so I just want to put it out there as this is a concept we want to probably consider to ask.
Yeah.
It could be that you're limited. There might be there are other resources like trees, living trees somewhere behind there.
Yeah, it is heavily, it is heavily forested behind. It's all. Yeah, and by leaving the building there, this area is all kind of partially open.
Opened up.
The forest in the back, it would be easier to tie into the power and whatnot. Would actually leave the lot more pristine enough if we did move it back.
Yeah, understood.
But it would, it definitely would double, easily double the value.
We're gonna have to change some land much. Just put some paths down, build right there. I work this right now. Okay.
I, I live right near you, so I drive by. I live right near you, so I drive by time every day. Well, where I used to drive. See, we could have drive. Oh, anyway, Rich, go ahead.
I was wondering, is the plan to make this cabin two a dwelling unit? With toilet shows, cooking facilities, bedrooms, or is this gonna be a bunkhouse?
It's a bunkhouse, correct?
Yeah, pretty much bunkhouse.
No wine, just a, just a.
Okay, all right, well, that takes some of my concern away, the idea that it's not clear to me that it was a dwelling unit to begin with. I don't think we could grant a permit for dwelling unit if in fact it wasn't a dwelling unit before, so.
Yeah, I believe the correct, unattached better.
But I also agree with Peter that if it's being essentially torn down and then put back together, we need to look at whether or not it can be relocated further back from the water. It's thirty feet. It may, may involve a site visit. You know, I'm talking about trees and things like that, which ones need to come down. And also, I think you're proposing three trees to be removed, even if that weren't moved back. Nothing in the picture shows me what the trees look like or what the problem really is.
But I do think partly the concern is to salvage what was there. It will be easier to salvage in, you know, in place and, you know, put a new floor under it and whatnot, so.
Yeah, and most of it's all seen, and so we're gonna reuse it. It's all tiny groups, even the boards, even the doors can be reused.
Thanks. George?
I was just gonna. We're building what you and Richard already said. The ordinance on page fourteen talks that it is a nonconforming structure, of course, and if you have, if it's at less than fifty percent of the market value, that's when the provisions of the ordinance there play regardless of the reason. It could be a storm, it could be, you know, just deterioration, whatever. That's what we need to look at, whether or not it's useful to move it back at all. And really, the only way to do that is by us doing a site. But that's the provision that we're referencing, just for your permission.
It does have a meter on the backside.
Yeah, I noticed it on the photos.
Yeah, it was a sole pipe, and so somebody was.
And on the site plan, there are, it looks like there are three trees. And it says tree in the era.
Yeah.
Right?
Most of those trees are dead. The tops are gone right off. Most of them right now.
That's troubling.
If we would've got the micro storm, they got all that B net.
Yeah.
We'd have lost all those trees.
Wow.
Looking right up.
Gotcha. And seeing how you've indicated is wooded, wooded, wooded all over the place there.
Yeah, there's tons of trees behind it. So if you were to move it back, you'd have to clear a lot of trees. See a beast at the best place to run it. Run the Y right from here, where we proposed, but right to that, okay. Won't have kind of any trees other than that, so we'd have to do it all different.
Right? And just so you know, when we talk about moving back to the greatest practical extent, it's not to take down trees. Right? It's not what we're about. We would not be asking to take down trees just to move it, right? So. Rich?
I would respectfully somewhat disagree. It's not clear in my mind or whatever. You can't take down trees to move it back. You may have to replant some trees that you take down.
Very good point.
The other point, it sounded like you're gonna kind of tear it down, save parts and put it back together. Well, that's not gonna involve cutting a swath to move it back. If the parts are already blocked, you know, you clear an opening back there and you don't have to cut any trees other than if it happened to be able to get back to a hundred feet, if, then you don't really have to worry about the trees other than you can't wipe out everything in the past a hundred feet, but you can certainly clear an opening plus a lawn if you wanted to see on on the teeth.
So, good point. Thank you for that. So are we thinking a site visit is what's next? I think so. Something to get the boots on the ground experience, kind of figure it out. It'd be important.
I also have some other questions for the applicant as well, just to get them out on the table.
Let's do.
At whatever point. The first is one of the things that our ordinance requires, well, let me go back one step. Your description of what you want to do or need to do is slightly different than what's been presented in the application. The application is limited to the wall with the diet, the tree retreats and and the addition of the the addition to cabin two, but it doesn't address the rehab or reconstruction of cabin two. So you probably want to add that to the application so that we're actually applying, we're actually approving what you really want to do.
Can I make it know, I, this, my business partner did this. I'm just, he couldn't be here last minute, so I just came in his spot. So
Yeah.
I might not be a hundred percent correct in it.
Yeah.
I'll take, I mean, no, no.
I mean, it would be a minor matter to add that, but so I just wanted to say that. It's the other thing that the the ordinance requires us to have in front of us for cabin two be a side view of the finished product. We have the photos, which are quite helpful, but we don't have that profile drawing. So that that's another item that the ordinance requires. And the the last question I had had to do with the foundation. Is it, are you talking pads? Is that what I heard?
Yeah.
Insulated pads?
Yeah.
All right, the, the reason I ask is if you're gonna do a full slab or anything or a foundation crosswall that involved a lot of excavation, then there's some other requirements that get triggered, including having to use a DCP certified contractor. That that's not gonna be the case here.
But that's, that's a good heads up.
Yeah.
They have pads under that one now. Kind of like stones are used on yellow that's around pads and something on it.
Rich, I just have one last comment, and it's, the comment isn't, I mean, it's for you, but it's something that we need to make sure that we're telling applicants when they're expanding a nonconforming structure. And I don't think we've done it in the past, but if you go to page eleven of our ordinance.
Oh.
Section twelve, D, well, that's small D, but anyway, the D paragraph. People expanding a nonconforming structure are now required to file certain materials such as pictures or plans. I'm not sure if the pictures are plans or whatever. Recorded two-scale plan showing the existing proposed footprint and the proposed structure and the existing and proposed structure height, the footprint of other structures in the registry of deeds. I bet there's a lot of them out there that aren't in the registry of deeds, although I think this is a, it's a, I think it's part of law that's in our ordinance. It probably was adopted certainly less than ten years ago.
Yeah, right, right. That's a good point, because I mean, just that task alone about filing anything with the registry of deeds that you're not used to doing, this would be kind of a.
So, yeah. File a proposal.
Pardon me?
File a proposal or?
No, no.
Asset, okay, yeah. So it's, it's, you know, unfortunately, it's legwork for someone.
Yeah.
Like if approved, then you take the stuff and go to registry deeds.
And I know the the variance statute has the same kind of thing, and I think if it's not filed within ninety days, the variance goes away.
Oh, wow. Right? Yeah, good point. All right, so do any more questions for the applicant? Anything for the applicant? Sarah? Rich, any more comments or anything? So, so would it be okay that we do a site visit? Come down and walk around, look at stuff?
And we'll do the drawings and add it. Right, like, sort of.
Yeah.
Thank you. That'd be awesome.
Yeah.
Then.
Number five.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you know, Gary, so if you have any questions, bring them in my buzz.
Okay.
Right? In terms of the date or the time to do it, is, I guess, first of all, I want to make sure I'm asking the board. Do we want to go down individually or how does the board want to tackle it?
I could go down individually.
Two roads away. Easy. And I can. I'm one runner away. Easy. So for those others who want to just go down individually, or how do you want to go? How do you want to tackle it?
Well, I'd like to do what's convenient for them.
Right. It'd be nice if we could do that and ask questions. Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, okay, I guess. Can I, can I get on Ted Hawk or what? Or, right, you, you want to be, be there?
I guess, yeah, it doesn't matter. If you had questions, I think I could answer them better in person, though. We could always answer them afterwards.
So what, what is your schedule?
I'm, I'm open, so.
So I, I will go to go all together. I will take the things that we can. I will work around and stay with people. Whenever you want to go, I go.
Yeah, I, I don't know where I'm gonna go, so I'm busy, so. I just have to go out, so. Yeah, I just.
So, um.
So let's toss some dates up then. Do you like a weekend date or?
Very, we're during the week and we'll.
I like week. We still have light after work. I'll just put it out there, ten, six o'clock, five thirty, how about five thirty? Five thirty work? Can five thirty on a day work? Yeah. Okay, so let's, so we got time. Let's go for a day. What day in the week is, is okay?
Tomorrow.
We don't want to take it on Friday.
It'll be our time.
Friday.
I'll be out of town very long. Yeah.
Monday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, next super. What do you guys think?
Okay, thank you. So I'm trying to think ahead. Can, can like a Tuesday night work?
I don't think it works.
Can Tuesday?
Tuesday night works.
Yeah?
I think so.
Tuesday?
I'm not sure.
Is there a better than this?
I'm not sure of that. We'd speak to an entirely different problem than the personal one on my part.
Does August the twenty-fourth?
Tuesday, yes, I believe that is the case.
What's the date?
Twenty-fourth.
So I don't want to force the issue, but if the twenty-fourth, Tuesday, at five thirty can work, it seems like some of us can go. Is that okay with you folks?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Peter, I just want to bring out that that may not work for me. It's our anniversary.
And ours is the next.
Gotta go.
Yeah. Yeah.
So it's on Mondays.
Good Monday.
On Monday? Can Monday at five thirty work?
Monday works.
Okay, can Monday at five thirty work?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the twenty-third.
Sure.
Yeah, Monday, eight, twenty-three, five thirty PM down on Homeward Way, right?
Yeah, I, I think I'm not gonna be able to make it here. I think I have to bring my son to the airport that day. But I'll double check and I'll let them know.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I can give Gary if myself wants to want to comment in there and get some questions.
Yeah, I actually can't do that legally, so, but I appreciate the offer.
That would get my number away.
No matter how hard you try. All right, so it sounds like we're on board for, at least several of us, but probably three, maybe four to go down on Monday, the twenty-third at five thirty PM at nine Homeward Way. So see you, see you then, right? I think officially, right, do we want to, I'm just gonna ask, we want to table this until after we're done? Site app, site visit, so that the clock's not ticking for the application. Okay, we're in agreement, so I would entertain a motion to that to table it.
I'll make a motion to table the application.
And second, any more discussions? All those in favor? George?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Thank you. Craig?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
And I'm in favor, so we table. We'll see you Monday evening, Craig. Thank you.
We're doing homework. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Last time we had one of your applications, the, the landlord came in wearing one of your sweatpants.
Yeah, yeah.
She knew right away what was up.
She has, she has her band dress supposed to wear on her hat, so.
Oh, cool.
It didn't help myself. Thank you, guys. All right, thanks.
So far, we have accomplished a thank you.
We're real good at table and stuff.
Oh, we're trying. All right, next, I believe, is we have the Marshall, I'm sorry. I'm not doing a great job announcing. John Bertian?
Berthe, Bertha, Berthe, Berthe.
Okay, like what you said.
First of all, I, I did, I kind of just go to John.
Okay. John B, whose specific property is at thirty Hewland Road in Belgrade, map twenty-five, what, thirty-six? And Mr. Marshall, you are representing John B and Dan.
Yes, that's correct.
Super duper. And let's see, we have a letter saying as much, right? It's in there. And you're proposing, or what is being, not you are proposing, what is being proposed, if I understood this correctly? There was something about a porch that you want to I read, carry a pitch?
Yeah, it's currently, I don't want to interrupt you, sorry.
No, no, that, that was all.
It currently is is dropped down below the existing floor of main camp by about ten inches. So it's like eighty inches. Actually, I think it's had a few different levels of flooring put on the inside, but it has a, under a one-pitch roof on it because they didn't want to disturb maybe the existing roof back when they put, I don't know. The porch is pretty close to being original to the building, based on it being hemlocked. The porch was sitting on the ground. We recently jacked it up. And the floor is in pretty rough shape, but we're not gonna change the footprint at all. Right now, there is two-by-fours holding the roof up from the previous winter because it didn't look like it was gonna take even a simple snow load. It, it's two-by-four construction. The existing camp has a hip roof on it. It's a five. Doesn't exceed twenty feet. I would basically like to just carry the five-twelve out over the porch so that it can handle a snow load, being a seasonal camp. It's not a full-time residence. They just don't want to be putting money into something that may not be there come next year.
Right, you don't have to throw good money after, let me see, throw good money after bad.
I'd rather be good than lucky, yes. Yeah, so, yeah, exactly. See this portrait here? It's basically flat, and it's actually dropped down, but you can't tell because the way they carried the siding, they faked it with this little eight-inch PVC board on decks. We've brought the camp up a foot because this kitchen was completely on the ground as well as this porch, but it was all like leaning towards the lake. In sense, I mean, I put crushed rock on the drip lines. I've done a lot of things that Gary and I kind of shoot for when going through with any project anyways, just because what was there was kind of unsatisfactory. It was just understood open gravel pine needles and stuff. So we're just trying to get it so that it's a little bit more. So we're just trying to get it so that it's a little bit uh, more realistic to be, walk away from it, so to speak. Like the drainage pipes, he doesn't have to pay someone to shovel it when it's gone.
Okay.
Or worry about tipping in.
Okay.
It's pretty brutal. Say the cabin's eighty years old, something like that.
Yep, so it's been around for a while, right?
Nineteen forty's, yeah.
Um, by this uh, diagram that you presented, I'm seeing uh, it's like forty nine feet from Great Pond to the corner of the porch. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And am I correct in understanding what you want to do is, is carry a roof over the porch? May I understand that correctly?
Yeah, basically, there's a five twelve now on the camp, and if you look at one of the profile pictures that I submitted, it would be a profile picture of the east side of the camp. Um, so we see an entrance door, a handful of decks, you can see how you can't even see the porch roof, because again, it's like a, it's less than a one pitch.
Okay. So I think I'm getting it a little bit better now, so this picture I'm looking at right here is.
Do you mind if I come over?
Yeah, go for it. So I'm seeing a pitch, I'm sorry, hip roof here.
Yeah, so if you go back one photo, it would be a little bit easier for you to interpret it. So basically, you'd like to carry this roof line right over the front porch, right now, it's just a one twelve and it's a six foot wall inside the porch. You'd like to just make it the same height wall, it's underframed to accept. And the pitch now, because they've taken what was a screen porch, threw some windows in it and put a roof on it, so it's basically just carrying this spaceship. Right out over the porch, carrying a five twelve.
So that, that, that five twelve pitch would continue out?
As a gable instead of a hip.
Yeah, exactly.
Right now, it's all hip towards the screen, so it would actually give the stream a little benefit of the doubt to be able to absorb the rainfall a little better. It would be beneficial to our own, because right now, it's all rain, right towards the screen. So by putting a gable there, you're acting as a shed, you're letting the water go to the sides, instead of just kicking, can't leave any water over the front.
So let's put that on here.
It's just a deck.
It's stayed.
Yeah. And decks are all going to be up off the ground, right now, they're all, they were in the dirt, they came up with the camp. There's some pressure, pressure thrown around and stuff, so that they're not just absorbing the deck and running out, it's kind of giving a chance to go underneath the deck.
So basically, it's not doing anything, it's like, no, that, it's not changing the square footage.
No.
It's just.
It's the next. Special file details, sorry.
Kill the mouse.
It's true, Jay, my dog got a mouse, so I'm excited today. That's true, I thought it was just hanging out in the camp, because of the puddle, but he's about to snack.
So it doesn't have nice control while we're down there.
So basically, nothing's happening, um, in the roof's mansion, and just putting a gable there, so there's no gain of square footage, there's no gain of height, there's no gain of. So.
That's what I'm, it's pretty straightforward.
That's what I'm thinking, based on what he's talking about. It seems very straightforward.
Yeah.
If anything, I feel as though doing this benefits the stream, because you know, you know, now the water's running off the side, instead of shooting off forty nine feet away, by the time it hits the lake, it's probably more like forty six. So by doing, changing, keeping the pitch, and changing to a gable instead of an hip, and keeping the drip line probably closer to like. The fifty foot mark post, trying to shoot it towards the stream. I, I, that just kind of came to me tonight, I was just thinking about that while we were talking, like, geez, that kind of helps if anything goes to. Just trying to absorb these other issues that you, you guys have with trying to preserve uh, the lake, the lake shore zone, right? I feel as though if uh, we do this, we're not preserving it, we're kind of helping it.
I got one question, down by the uh, screen, the waterfront there, what's going on? Is there any buffer down there at all, or they're all flowing more right down to the screen?
Um, it's lawn, but believe it or not, the camp sits lower than the stream. So it actually, the camp's down here, and the lawn kind of comes up ever so slightly, and then comes back down to the stream. Um, there isn't any grade headed towards the stream, if anything, it heads back towards the camp.
The points.
Yeah, it's, I, I think that was part of its, most of its problems throughout its life, is that it's been neglected to be lifted, so over time, you know. Gravity is one, and it's kind of settled in, and there's some pretty good sized rocks around underneath the camp, so they're pretty limited on. You know, they're never going to be able to put a foundation where it is, never going to be able to put it on any type of concrete frost wall or anything like that, without running into terrible problems with water table. Because in theory, they're low and the water table, the stream's high, they, they could be in jeopardy of, you know, having water in the camp, it's pretty steady, you know. And, but, but as rainy as it's been, if it hasn't yet, I don't think it's kind of, I've never seen so much rain in my life, but.
That's what I'm, I'm just a little bit confused, I'm trying to picture this, because I walked, I walked there to go to your, your gym. So when it rains then, where the water runs, runs towards, away from the stream rather than to?
It runs basically like, right now it does, but with the new plan, it would be running like, basically, they could, so if uh.
No, I understand.
Let's just say this table.
Yeah, I understand the weather, okay, I understand the weather. What I ask you is once the water hits the ground, how it runs?
Underneath the camp.
Really?
Doesn't get to the stream, it comes back towards the camp, because it slopes up.
Oh.
Boy, that's, that's rugged.
It is.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't have paid what they did for it, but that's not why we, yeah.
Right, right, it's not a criticism of anything else, we're just trying to understand which way the water flows.
This guy's put his heart into uh, saving his money up to grow up on the body of water, like he did when he was a kid.
Yeah.
He has one kid, uh, he's probably in his late fifty, sixties, and does not want to ever expand. There is like a bunkhouse thing, it's, it was a garage, but it's like, someone turned it into a bunkhouse. Um, he has no interest in ever adding a bathroom to it or anything like that, he's happy with just having a seasonal camp on stream. This guy, he may never have other application from this guy.
So the camp is basically a boat on ground?
Uh, some could refer to that, if, if we get enough rain, or more than that, I would say that it could run into some problems. We, we would be, you know, up for moving some material under there, so that it, it doesn't create problems around the, the concrete pads and stuff, just kind of building up the areas that hold the camp up. Again, all, all maintenance issues opposed to blow dry.
So how many pads that the camp has?
Are you going to hold me to this?
No, 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 I'm just curious.
Fifteen, between fifteen and twenty, something like that.
And they're above the ground?
They're on, they're on ground level.
On ground level.
Yeah, maybe a few inches above the ground, with just a, a high, a, a real good gravel, three quarter inch gravel placed around the pad, with a piece of foam underneath the pad, just so that. As water creates, it doesn't hang where the pad is holding the camp.
I'm sorry, I had, I was just curious, so. The water running out of that site is just going to the, in the streams is not, well, one quarter goes back to.
Yeah, it's, it seems like, based on the way they presented the information, we're looking at, it says slope.
There is a slight slope from the driveway down to the camp, but it fades about where the camp ends, and then it's, if anything, it probably comes back up that, say, two degrees.
Okay. It's the way it is. Um. Okay, so doing that roof like you talked about, Craig, this is carrying it forward, right? And when I say forward, I'm thinking of, correct me if I'm wrong, this is um, in that same roof.
Same direction, same pitch.
That's going towards Great Pond Street.
Correct.
Got it. What other questions do we have for the applicant? So there's no change of height, no change of anything, really, it's, it's trying to make the roof a better roof, sounds like to me.
I'd like, I'd like to see a meek snow wall that's in this area, I mean, we've got a couple white letters, but let's not fool ourselves with weather nature limits.
Yeah, always does, right? Um, there is no proposed um, uh, anything to the bunkhouse stuff, there's no proposed any dirt disturbance, right? I think, I think we're okay. Did you have a question?
No, I'll spread your mic back.
I just wanted, didn't want to. Okay.
Peter, just a comment?
Yeah.
Um, my thinking on this is, my comment earlier to the other gentleman about expansions needing to be filed in the registry of deeds. This would not be considered an expansion, uh, sorry, doesn't pertain to the project.
I, I don't have much to do, I was looking for some extra homework, but I appreciate it. I'll, I'll take that to heart, thank you. I, I've been trying to absorb this, just because I feel as though sometimes we all learn together, and I didn't mean to interrupt your priors, I was just trying to absorb, you know. Some of the uh. Some of the things would save me a lot of time if I knew when I was on site, like, you know, it took me a little while to meet up with Gary and for Gary to say, but well. I can't give you the permit, but it's pretty straightforward what you're trying to do here, I think if you go to the planning board, spend the time and get what's for, okay? Sometimes, if I can't get that intensive answer, I spend an infinity amount of time on something with someone that could just go. I know what I mean, so that's the only reason why I was trying to, I, I don't, I'm not picking sides, I just, variances and waivers and stuff, I. To me, there's a lot of gray area there, so I just try to learn, you know, how it goes, because it seems like the people with the deeper wallets kind of win. But they, they give us their wallet, if they don't, they just pay the fines anyway, so, and in this case, there's no deep wallets, the guy's a blue collar guy, just like you are.
Gotcha. Thank you for telling.
You're welcome to come, anytime you want to come to work.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, Richard, glad you talked about the, the fact that um, they're not increasing non-conformity.
Yeah.
Non, non-conformity.
If, if you were proposing to raise it higher than the existing roof, then that would be expensive, right?
But what you're proposing, there's no expansion. Right, it's just making a roof that, it sounds like.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I mean, I wouldn't sleep under it, I've slept on the worst, but, but, you know, in the winter, you know, like. If you were to go in there with any amount of snow on it, I would PSA that you, you're at risk type of thing, you know, it's whole two by fours, two feet on center.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's just, it's time for it to just be brought up to, to our, our standard cold snow, snow, which I believe is like eighty P S F in this area or something like that.
So, hey, yeah.
So, like, you know, I, I just would take off with hammock, I just want to go kill it, so. My own sleeping, say, you know.
Yeah.
What's the next, a couple hundred bucks to go from two by six to two by eight, right? So.
I made a motion.
Yes, sir.
Can I make, make a motion to accept the application as considered with uh, D E P's best practice? Is that a condition, the condition of the D E P best practice?
Best management practice.
Best practice.
Management roof runoff?
Management roof runoff, or, or just on the core, throw it aside.
Right, because that's the only new.
But he's already said he's got one, so.
So we've got a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
I should.
Thank you, Sarah. Um, so, starting the findings of fact thing, so we can watch for that. So, just so you know, we have this process to go through, it's, I don't want to burn up a lot of your time, but it, it is definitely processed, so we have to ask questions and follow it.
It's gonna seem a little overkill for your project.
Yeah.
For most projects we deal with, it's not, so.
Yeah, especially if I saw that in mine.
I just wanted you to know, this is the same thing we've been, this is in, we're trying to do this every single time, that's what we're required to do, it's called findings.
I feel as though this leaning's gone a lot more fan than it doesn't roam, if that makes you feel any better. I feel like, you know, favoritism and demean and stuff like that should not be at any point in time interfered with your decision, you know. I just appreciate that, you know, you guys are just here, don't need the time, doing a job to just help the area, and that's, I'm not here to pick wars, I'm just trying to defend the guy. Can't be, you know.
And he's always welcome to come down to any of our meetings.
Yeah, no, I'm sure John will make an appearance at some point in the town, he gives more time, he has something.
You can join us soon.
Right.
He adds running out, isn't it, Scott, you can tear his arm, so, it's coming to a head, it's coming to a head.
So we had a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, um, and then I, I don't know if this is process right, but we're in the more discussion part, I think this is where we would do the findings of fact and conclusions of law part. Um, I'm going to recommend we do that, start filling out the, that form, so we've got the applicant, John B, address thirty Hewland Road, tax map twenty six, lot thirty six. Um, the, the applicant's on, on the date, and we talked about, apply for shoreline permit for, and I just used the same words that you did on the application. Um, I said make current porch one twelve, carry the same roof pitch to allow proper strength for current snow loads per code. Um, I did add, remove hip portion and make gable end.
Correct.
That was part of our discussion that we talked about, which I thought was clarified.
Yes.
I didn't want to put words in your mouth.
No, that is exactly right.
Okay. The application was presented to the planning board on today's date, which is. Um, these findings of fact. Right. Um, based upon the application materials, testimony, statements, evidence, another mature submitted to it, and the above findings of fact, Belgrade Planning Board finds the project, oh, is or is not permitted. Um. I, I would look like clarification, under section two conclusions of law, that first thing, what is the appropriate thing to put in?
In this case, it would be is, because it, and that, that's a reference to uh. The zone and, and that kind of thing, so.
Okay. All right, thank you, because it seemed a little.
Yeah, it's a little awkward.
It is a little awkward, um, then going forward is, under section fourteen, table one in the ordinance, further makes the following conclusions based on. The applicable provisions in section sixteen D of the ordinance, number one, that this, approved this proposal will maintain safe and healthful conditions. So by a vote, the board found this standard was net based on um, application submissions in the public record, that's the standard language that we have. Right, so I'll let you roll call vote for edit, does mean, right? George?
Yes.
Pete? Craig?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Five in favor and none opposed on that part?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is a silt fence completely necessary for this project, going up the surface of there?
In my opinion, no, I would always check with Gary, always.
You just, you know, he tells me, draw it in there, it never hurts to have it as part of the plan, and if you ask for me there, they, if they feel like it's necessary, then they, they can maintain it, but.
All you're doing is the roof.
Yeah, I mean, it kind of turns into a hat, it's just tight there, and it turns into like a trip hazard almost, you know, you come off the deck, and there isn't very much room for you to, you know, to work.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't actually hear your question, was it about the soil erosion?
Whether you need a silt fence. It seems like there's nothing that's going to disturb the soil.
I, my personal view is no.
You can disturb it at all, but if that stands out, that would be.
Yeah, I. You're not, you're not doing any excavation work, you're not just doing any soil disturbance, um, my personal opinion is no.
Same. Okay, does that help?
Yep, thank you.
And again, I can't say it enough, always check with Gary, when in doubt, check with Gary.
Yeah, no, I'm good as hell, thank you.
Excellent, moving on, will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation. Excellent, moving on, will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation to surface waters. By a vote, the board found this standard was met based on the. Application submission in public records, so George.
Yes.
Pete.
Yes.
Craig.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Five in favor and none opposed. Um, next, will adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater. About that, I, I would say. We don't often have that. Number four, will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat. By a vote, the board found this standard was met based on. So that, that, uh, not impacting the wildlife, so George.
Yes.
Pete.
Yes.
Craig.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
I too am. Five in favor and none opposed.
Gary, are you okay with me not having a silt fence up to do the porch?
You're not doing anything, you don't disturb the soil.
Okay, thank you, that's what we said.
Yeah, then we said always check with Gary, always, always, always. Number five, will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland waters. Will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated in coverage plan. Number seven, will avoid problems associated with flood plain development and use.
I think we could vote in the affirmative for that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mind. You okay with that? Because I think that what they're proposing, um, it's, it's fine, so, by a vote, the board found this standard was met. So, George.
Yes.
Pete.
Yes.
Craig.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Five, I too, five in favor, none opposed. Number eight, is in conformance with the provisions of section fifteen, this is the land use standards. So we have a number of these to go through. We do, this is a slate. A lot of these are not applicable, right?
Right.
That's like minimum lot standards. Principal and accessory structures. Campgrounds. Individual private camp sites. I'm saying NA.
Yes.
Not be able to pull in mind. Uh, commercial and industrial uses. None being proposed, I'm saying NA, parking areas, again, NA. Roads in driveways. Then also NA. Signs. Stormwater runoff, I think that would be applicable because we have a condition, so, um. Based on application submissions and public record, can I also say, um. See, see the condition, or something like that, is that what they, um. Which talks about that very thing. Um, so, based on that, so I think we want to vote, so roll call, George.
Yes.
Uh, Pete.
Yes.
Craig.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
I too am in favor, as five in favor, none opposed about that aspect. That was I, J, septic waste disposal system, nothing, nothing was proposed for that.
No, it is updated as an engineer, bleach field with a pump station, I'm a liar.
Yeah, but that's not applicable for what you're proposing.
No, but I just thought.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, it's a good heads up, thank you. Next is K, my favorite, essential services. L, mineral exploration and extraction.
That's my favorite, yeah.
Agriculture. Not applicable, N, timber, timber harvesting and land management roads. Applicable, uh, clearing or removal of vegetation for activities other than timber harvesting. Posted, I would say not applicable, P, hazard trees, storm damaged trees and dead tree removal. Then we're being.
No, I said a great big tree did fall, did fall in that storm, but it's all, I mean, uh.
So it's good. Alright, so I'm gonna say NA unless someone has an objection. Q, exemptions to clearing and vegetation removal requirements, obviously that would be not. Uh, revegetation requirements, are there any revegetation?
No.
Because it's just a roof. Uh, erosion and sedimentation control, um, I think I want to reference, if it's okay with you all, that condition. Which is not in the worst control, um.
I think that's NA.
Just, just NA, because there's no ground disturbance, right, so that's really. Yes, so. Great. Um. Shoreline stabilization, that also be applicable.
Before you keep going with that, you, you said there's no shore disturb, the, um. There's nobody erosion, but we, we're gonna have a deep line. In a different way. So, so when that water goes there, it will, it will create some real erosion. So we don't have to do that condition in that, 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 uh.
I would say we do not, and this, that erosion instead of a tation control part. Um, has to do with the soil disturbance, so if you're constructing like a basement and you have to dig away, dig stuff away.
Okay.
Is those practices that you had in place to manage erosion instead of tation control? That's what that part is normally getting at, but I think Craig's, um, condition handles anything has to do with, um. Roof runoff and hitting the ground, because anything that will hit the ground is, will be managed by the DEP best management practice.
So, so even when that. Um, spot on the, in the, um, one that we're telling. Ask about erosion, we, we, because we already talked about at the top of the application, we don't have to put it in there again.
I would agree.
I'm sorry, it's just.
Oh, oh, it's good to get through it, right? If I'm wrong, someone please tell me, because I don't want to get on the wrong path. Um, T, shoreline stabilization. Uh, soils. Uh, water quality. So this has to do with, um, water quality as it relates to, uh, land use standards, right? That, that was being proposed is, is in conformance with section fifteen land use standards. So, that's just simply NA. W, historical and archaeological sites. Say NA, then lastly is resource protection.
NA.
Okay, then we have our, our standing condition, which is managed stormwater runoff from new or expanded, this is not expanded. Um, structures in accordance with section fifteen I of the Belgrade Shorelands zoning ordinance and the. In the main Department of Environmental Protection's best management practices as outlined in the conservation practices for homeowners publication. Such measures are to be put in place prior to building use. And we know this is a standard, uh, condition that applies to all permits unless we give it a necessary. In this case, we've already brought it up, because we want to control anything that comes off that roof. And to utilize one of the best management practices that are part of DEP's application. There are a number of them that are out there, you've seen, I'm sure, but we're asking to use a, any one of them.
Okay.
Do, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, exactly, is it still available on like being dug out, like if you want DEP's requirements?
Absolutely, and we may even have some pamphlets here.
Okay.
The most common is just a fresh tone on the drip line.
Which I already put in, just. And I was like, oh. Took me, oh, fifteen five gallon buckets, and I can't, got it down there, because as soon as you dump a bucket out, it's blood.
Oh, yeah.
Just watch out for the rocks, never mind what I'm doing. Keep the flow going.
High visibility.
Place, I could never live there, it's the busiest place I've ever seen in my life, I just.
It's not that bad.
Bad in the game, I don't. They can even be doing anything going in there, I mean, there's one store, there's no gas station, but yet there's. Fifty volts, we can get in there to pack on one dock, that's. Check ahead, try to stay focused.
Good idea.
Call boat TV.
It's like, like that, it's like the atmosphere was leaking out or something.
Alright, so I mentioned the, that standard condition that applies, because we brought it up, right? Um, that goes through, that's the only condition we have, that I know of. And we're on to the decision, so based on the above findings of fact, conclusions of law on. One, the town of Belgrade Planning Board, who's this, will we vote? So.
We already have a motion and a second.
True, we have a motion and a second, this is our discussion, thank you, I'm sorry. Thank you, motion and a second, in fact, discussion, we'll go through the findings of fact. So I think we're in a position to now vote in favor of approving the motion to, to approve this, uh, application. So, all those in favors, so George.
Yes.
Pete.
Yes.
Craig.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Five in favor, um, none opposed.
You just might have had on you, huh, they don't really include you much, do they?
Usually there's somebody missing, but the last, the last couple meetings, uh. Everybody's been prompt and proper, she, she would ask to sign this. Let's sit up here, if you've proved it a word.
Okay.
Oh, wow, do we intend and not virtually? Why do you want to do it virtually?
I, she said this is much easier.
It is much easier, if we're, if we're here to do it, you know. Doesn't matter to me, alright, um, so anyway, here we are, so the shoreline permit application of. Yeah, yeah, it is you, Mr. Marshall, is that right, you're the applicant in this case, right?
Yes.
So, is it Bruce Marshall?
Yes.
Well. That's his permit.
It's used to determine electronically.
I know, everyone's lost, going back to.
Yeah, I know.
It's awful, he would be banking, the same lead, if they don't know how to act, when you come in, they're like, oh, 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 you're Bruce? Yeah, I know, I've seen you with nine, like, you're in virtual banking. They still have a high time taking a picture of a check and saying, okay, that's Cindy Banker.
Yeah, and it was a little weird.
Yeah, I'm gonna hold on to this and just run by there Monday, make sure everyone's done a safe. Gotta watch out for the mouse, Gary.
You already killed it.
I already killed it, though.
Just putting in, um, things like your name, Bruce, name, date.
Do you have my address on there? Do you need my address?
Uh, we have it on the application, I believe.
So send it to you, not me, you.
Yeah, yeah.
So you may have.
Yeah, that way I can post it, Gary, I know you guys like see it on the window, that way when people drive by, you go, no, no, that thing in the window is just a. A stick of my new door, that's, that's the problem.
I'll say, I'll get a gold check.
So, this has been approved, Bruce, it will be mailed to you. And it looks like it's gonna go to, since you're the applicant, to one seventeen Excal, uh, Drive and Lookland.
Yes, correct.
So, and all information is there, um, just for everybody's awareness, since there is no. There is no soil disturbance, so there is no DEP certified contractor number on here, which is not needed.
Right.
Right, so it's not, it's not, um, missing anything, that makes sense? Great, we're set, good luck.
Okay.
Alright, you're more than welcome to stick around.
There must be something better on TV, though.
I, I don't watch my CD, but I've been up since five, and I, I can figure a few ways of passing one little time I have left with my eyes open.
I hear you, I hear you.
Thank you for your time, well, just, ladies, I'm sorry, we all have busy lives as well, I don't think.
We do.
Well, that's alright, maybe if I create a little bit more time, table test be pretty good, like, I don't know, I. Fifteen years, so I'll slow down a little bit.
Yeah.
I think it's good, though, I like that Greg's here, because he's like a builder and that helps to turn, interpret a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's not, it's easy to be said as a builder, like, I can tell you how easy it is, but then. To describe the actual motions sometimes in a way that you understand can be hard.
We need to keep it real, right, and builders know what's real.
Yeah, so, I mean, at the end of the day, realistic, you know, realism does come into. To the facts when we're rehabbing stuff that was designed in the forties. Don't get me wrong, some of the best stuff in this country was designed in the forties, but I don't think it's just normal.
Right.
I think, you know, everyone grabbed a trailer and what they had to pick it down, but anyways, alright, thank you for your time, nice.
Thanks, have a great night, Greg, carefully, thank you. Alright. It's next up, I think, what is next up on the agenda, was it to go back, was it to go to the, uh, drawings? Or.
Big stuff.
Yeah, alright, so George, thank you very much for the creation of this overhead view and public view. Examples of how to meet the requirements for planted vegetation screen along the public road. So, um. Let's see, so these. So, we've got the figures, we show both the overhead view and the side view, right? Then, we've got a description of what's going on. And I think what we're proposing is, so that's figure one, and then figure two does the same thing, type of thing, so it's a repeat. So, are we proposing that we are able to provide both the picture and the text to anybody? Is that what we're?
Yeah, I, I think the intent is, and, and first off, let's be, I, I just want to make sure we're all clear, th- there's nothing new about this. This is strictly from the ordinance, it, it's only intended as guidance, uh, including the narrative on the back of the page. So the narrative goes with the figure on the front of the page, uh. So, simply to just, you know, include it with the application, so that. When an applicant is trying to figure, complete the application, when they're trying to figure out what they need to do in the site drawing and stuff like that. They have some visual to help guide them rather than just the verbiage in the ordinance. Really all it's about.
I, I think it's an excellent way to do it, it's not unlike what we did when we had the instruction sheet go along with the shoreline zone allocation. The only difference is, um, this is text, that, the, what you've done is picture and text.
It, it's sort of what we did with the, uh, sample site drawing for the shoreline zoning. To give people a visual example.
It helps me, because they've got to fill out the application.
Yeah, yeah, well, you know, that was my next thing here, is to find out, do you find this helpful, because.
Anything we can provide to them, I find helpful, if they agree, they think I'm gonna fill out the application form.
Yeah, okay, so if you think this is helpful, that's probably, to me, the most important thing.
It's just an answer.
Yeah.
Yes.
And hopefully, you know, people can get an idea by both the pictures and the text, so.
And, and so, you know, just make sure everybody understands, the figure one, the first one is for basically. Most areas in town, whereas figure two is, and I believe it was Rick discussing that. I do this as well, uh, the, uh, is for the village districts where the, where the, uh. Requirements are less rigorous.
Right, and we have those three districts, or three, uh, areas in town that are village districts, right, so this. Depot, North of.
Right.
And Village.
Right, right, and the depot is a pretty large. Right, right, and the Depot is a pretty large area.
There are three.
Yeah.
One thirty-five?
Uh, well, one thirty-five down here, that, uh, I'm not sure exactly where you're saying, but Depot is this area, and that's a large area.
All the way down to Hammond.
Yeah.
Yes.
That makes sense, Pete?
Going down one thirty-five, where, where you guys?
No, no. No. Yeah. No.
I've got a good question. And I know I heard this, but I book on my, you know, so what is the actual distance between the public right of way and the road, what is the actual distance should be there? Five feet between the roads? And so that is, you place the, the red line as a public right of way. So it, that line, red line, and the, the road, the separate public road, what is that distance there?
So, so the, this isn't the scales, first off, Sarah. Uh, it's just a schematic, and the public right of way is gonna be whatever it is for that particular road that's before, you know, that the project's on, because it, it varies, some are two rod roads, some are three rod roads, et cetera, and so the right of way is gonna change, uh, depending on what road. Gary, you probably could explain it better than I, but.
No, it doesn't vary. For instance, on Route twenty-seven, it's a hundred foot right of way. The right of way on this road out here is a hundred feet wide.
Okay.
Did you say a hundred feet? So, um, the plantings, that, in the description, it tells you screening is to be twenty-five feet from the edge of a public road right of way, except for that portion of Route twenty-seven. But it explains that there's enough, um, that's one of the.
Yeah, the descriptions. And same thing for figure two also, right?
Yes.
Cause, and then one of the most important things, it says on figure two, it says, trees are not to be planted in the right of way. Which is good advice, I think.
Well, and, um, yeah, cause they can't maintain them, I mean, deer feed might come along, or whoever, and cut them down, and nothing's been accomplished, so.
So, so maybe there's something implied here, but, um, when, uh, some activity takes place, they would have to, people have to find out where the right of way is. Right, by talking with you, maybe.
Right.
Not maybe, by talking with you. Right, determine that, so that they know that when. Okay. So, um. Are there any other questions about the figures, these, these schematics and the text that we that we have before us, because I think if we all like what George has done, act to have this as part of supplemental stuff to go forward, is that the intent to have it?
Yeah, it, it just then becomes a question, and I don't, I don't know if it's a question for you, Gary, or for Sheila, or who, but, you know, what's the best way to get, you know, to add this to the application?
This is for commercial, anyway.
Yeah, it's commercial only.
Yeah. Yeah, which is good.
When I make a bunch, it won't be colored. I can't communicate in the company. Let's go out in France. We don't have a color copy? Yeah. No, no, geez.
Yeah. I'm not sure, you know, that's gonna matter a whole lot.
So, uh, so Sarah, do you have any questions about what's being proposed here?
I, I have, uh, I do have a division, and it's still, it's just don't, it's not clear to me. The, the buffer between trees and road, which you call right, public right of way. I guess they're gonna have to talk to Gary and decide how much it is.
Yeah.
Depending.
Yeah.
On where the development is.
Right.
So it can vary from a hundred feet.
Sixty-six is the most.
To sixty-six?
Sixty-six is the most. People thirty-three feet off the road. That's we, actually, you all know a little more, right? So you don't hang out in the right of way of the road.
So we know it's happening right away.
Yes, it does, but we wait for the quiet, but the houses are so close, it's still right. I don't think it's a hundred feet down there, that this push down.
Means, and, and along some roads, including state and, and town road, it's gonna be obvious, because there's stone walls that. Right, you mark the edge of the right of way.
So Gary, do you know all of them, or do you have the information at all, or would an applicant sometimes better off to just go to DOT, uh, state license? Or is that information you have readily available?
No, but I can lean on Jason for his assistance, he knows most of it. Excellent, that's another great resource.
So I, I will, I will say that more as a way of development, and that's a really quick thing. Now I see where you were talking about, the food trucks, I understand now why you were talking about.
Yeah.
But so, anyway, it's interesting.
And just a quick side note, so, so Gary mentioned that you'd lean on Jason, so the, so that's a very valuable resource.
Stevens.
Right?
Road Commissioner.
The Road Commissioner?
Jason Stevens.
Oh, Stevens, oh, okay.
Right, he'd be a great guy to talk to, he'd say, hey, what's the, yeah, it's the right of way.
I thought he, yeah, was that?
No, it's, yeah.
Oh, okay, so Jason did.
Alright. What, what he made me think about was they appointed him. Not elected here, he's down.
Right?
Oh, where did that ask?
It's just, yeah.
Yeah, I think it was approved at town meeting, wasn't it?
Yep. Yeah.
The, uh, yeah, Jason has to know, pretty much know where the evidence is before he starts catching.
Or there's trouble.
Yeah.
Potential trouble. Okay, so are we kinda clear on the, both the intent and the content of these schematics that we've been, that have been provided? We good? So, I, I would like to think that we could then, if we vote on it, and approve it, then it becomes part of the, uh, guidance that can go out with the commercial development package, ready?
Sure, there, I guess, should there, should be a note on that, that uh, they have talked to you about the, um, that clearance of right of way, and, and, and did that. I'm sorry, I'm reading Bush, I was, oh, this is, this thing is from, it's not all to.
Yeah.
It's not to in Puerto Rico that the, 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 right, the proper line, people put walls of the houses right on the proper line.
I mean, this, it, because it's electronic, it'd be easy to add, like, a little note on the bottom, saying, see code of enforcement officer for right of way.
Like, if you're coming through a commercial one. You get to tell me, you should.
Yeah, no.
We're gonna have all that stuff.
Yeah, 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 you're right, I mean, you're gonna have to survey.
Your, your person have twenty minutes.
Well, do we wanna vote on this, if so, I'd entertain a motion to, uh, to. It's a little self-serving there, Mr. Saxon. Yeah, you wanna do it? Pete, you wanna do it?
I can throw it up.
I'll let somebody else do it.
We approve the, uh, drawings, uh, verbiage is pictorial on the setbacks, on the, uh, but the shrubbery tree.
For the planted vegetable screen?
Yeah.
Very good.
That's right.
Then seconded, thank you, any more discussion?
I, I wanted to, time to thank George for doing this.
It's a lot of work.
Isn't it, it's a lot of work.
It's, it's one of many things we've asked of you, so thank you very much. Alright, so all those in favor, George moving votes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, you didn't say.
Yeah.
Craig?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Five in favor, none opposed, uh, so this would be part of the package.
Yeah, so, Gary, the, the best thing for me to do is to send this as an attachment to you and Sheila?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's no rush, she's on vacation next week.
Okay. Yeah, there is a rush, otherwise I'll forget.
There is that, right?
Cause you're on vacation every day.
Sort of, something like that.
Rich?
I just have a quick hypothetical question.
Go for it.
And for this to come into effect, or be, to have any bearing here, it'd have to be twenty years from now. But suppose somebody was required to plant a tree as part of this buffer, and they plant it three feet from the property. And twenty years from now, that tree is thirty feet tall with the branches extending over the property line. There wouldn't be anything that, in the ordinance, or, or prohibit the neighbor from lapping that off of the property.
No, there isn't, correct?
There isn't, no.
My take on it is, in twenty years, I don't want to do that.
Well, there's that practicality.
Yeah. So, the wise move would be to not approach the property line so closely that they could plant it.
I mean, that kinda comes up, I, I, it came up between my neighbor and myself, trees were on our property, but, you know, the branches were over the property line onto their property, and and, uh, they, you know, just simply asked if they could, you know, bring some of them, which, of course, it's, yes, but.
We run into that a lot when I was in the past. I was as close.
Yeah, 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 that's more of an issue than.
It actually was really great, it was a, the orange tree, and the orange is up on your side, but on the other side.
True, true.
Oh.
That happens a lot in my country.
Yeah.
I would put bushel baskets on my side.
Yeah, alright, um. I think, if you don't mind, we get back to, we've got three sets of minutes to go through, um, so does everybody have them to review?
Yes.
So we have the minutes from June twenty-second, July fifteenth, and August fifth. So maybe we can do them one at a time? So maybe with, how about June twenty-two first, so let's take a minute to be sure done through this.
There was a subdivision, proposed subdivision, site visit, right?
Yes, down at Tyler's place, right?
Yeah, yeah. I missed that, so.
I do know it.
I thought they were waiting for this new subdivision ordinance.
No, they were trying to avoid it, I think.
I, I think it is. I kinda remember him saying something to me about, he didn't think he would be able to do it as quickly as, uh, what he said on site or something that day. But certainly, didn't come back by August.
They, they wanna do it on this, it's all on this.
He's got houses on construction.
No, that first one, the email's here.
Sarah, are you, she's, are you talking about?
Yeah.
See, in that below.
Twenty-one to the twenty-second, says Mr. Baker in the news of radio, Inspector Jimline, and then says, uh, in below email. Together in below email. So the email's not higher than notes.
I see. Good point.
I have an email, I can forward to you.
Yes, not to me, to, no, that's a point of failure, we wanna go to, uh, Kate, Julie. Julie Morris, okay? She's all, all record keeping and everything, so that's good.
I'm sure she hasn't, she's just been given the, in the package. Was it not a font in?
And wasn't, uh, wasn't it you that typed these up originally? You had, uh, excellent notes on site.
Yeah.
So thank you for doing that.
I, I actually.
Maybe, yeah, maybe, maybe not. So based on, uh, has everybody had a chance to go through these notes?
Yeah, I had one, I had a one, uh, actually two, all at the very beginning. I think perhaps we ought to say, rather than, uh, Cedar Mill Ridge subdivision, or somewhere, say, proposed in there. We know it's not something that's approved there.
Right.
This, so somebody could wonder whether it's an amendment, so just put proposed in there.
I, I like that idea, so after Cedar Mill Ridge put in proposed before subdivision, and after Ridge.
Either that, or before Cedar Ridge, or whatever proposed.
Oh, you, would you prefer that?
I don't think, I, I.
Okay, let's do that, so the word proposed before Cedar Mill Ridge subdivision.
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
No, I, I just realized this, uh, these are my notes.
Yes.
That's right, I thought, I thought.
Yeah, these are my notes, I'm like, if I don't need them.
Yes, you did an excellent job. Is that why I read so well to you? Man, this is good.
You didn't reference Peter in here, though, Peter Sargent. And that, uh, if you go down to the first paragraph, or whatever, subdivision location, uh, so a mayor subdivision. So we've got the mayor of Artel Bray subdivision, so we need to change mayor to major.
Wait, I would, we're talking about the proposal, I was in there, I was in the bathroom.
He's just kidding.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't catch something.
Alright, so is that it, Rich?
Yeah, yeah.
So change, uh, mayor to major, we wanna include the word proposed in front of the language.
Yeah, yeah.
Sarah, any edits, other wise, alright, I have no other edits, so we three are those that can vote on this one.
Yeah.
So, um, uh, I, I would make a motion that we approve these minutes as amended. Alright, so that's a motion.
And I can vote.
Yeah, you can.
I'll second that.
Second, any more discussion? So I'll start off, uh, I'm in favor of approving these amended minutes, and Rich and Sarah?
Yes.
So three in favor, none opposed, the minute's passed, thank you very much for your work. Great, that's that one.
It was definitely helpful to me, because of having missed the site visit.
Oh, good, excellent, and I, on a side note, I learned a little bit more about the history of that area, with the old Cedar Mills that were down, which I didn't. It, it was a vague recollection that someone else had mentioned, actually, a friend of mine who had told me about a number of things that had gone on, so, anyway, it was good.
That my mother was missing here, uh, conclusion was on my part that that was a string that we looked at, and Jeff, um, Alan, yes, got, also got back to us and said, yes, we will treat it as a stream, but we didn't get it.
Okay, great, thank you, so that's the, uh, minutes from a site visit, next are the minutes from the planning board meeting on July fifteenth, everybody have them? Alright, so going through them, um, let's take a minute. Um, have people had a chance to go through the meeting minutes of July fifteen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, so Peter, George, Craig, Sarah, Rich. It looks like you were not present that night, so that's okay, right?
Yeah.
But your comments are always welcome, so what, are there any edits that suggest, I can only, one of them.
Yeah, I had a question, is the internet, the address for YouTube, correct?
You, oh wait, it's usually a period after BE and two.
Yeah, well, I didn't sue that, but.
Yeah, yeah, so that seems a little wrong.
Acrobo description.
That actually is correct, I just copy and paste it.
Really? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Learn something new every day.
Yeah. Excellent. Um, any, any other?
Nope.
Items? Pete, anything? Sarah, anything? Craig, anything? The only thing I want to mention is that Sarah's name should have a capital L.
Oh, yes.
Other than that, I think it's looking really good, so that's one minor edit, so. If we're all good, I would accept a motion to approve the event, minutes as amended.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Thank you, seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Pete, yes. Craig, yes. Sarah?
Yes.
Five in favor, none opposed, thank you very much, Julie, really appreciate that. Next up are the minutes from August fifth, everybody have that? Okay, great. Any, any edits to suggest on the meeting minutes from August five?
Just a question.
Yes, sir.
How come the ordinance doesn't go to the support?
Oh, that, that was being postponed until September, September, what is that date?
I can't remember now.
It's like the, whatever the first.
Oh, the seventh.
Seventh, yeah, seven. But I didn't get back to it. What, it was in my head, it's.
Yeah, did you get the email that didn't get released, just somebody in your board was there?
On the seventh?
Yeah.
Yeah. I will be there and Charles Tendall will be there.
As it turns out, I'll likely be there for a different reason, so I'll just stay. I have Peter, proper, hard, proper to plan it.
Okay. Busy, busy week. Uh, yeah, so postponed. Any edits?
I was there.
Yeah.
I saw you and I said, geez, I hope Craig isn't there for the subdivision ordinance. Oh, that's too bad.
Any other edits for these meeting minutes? Julie, oh, oh, sorry, we'll get there in a second, so entertaining motion on these minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, and seconded, and seconded, thank you, Craig. Roll call vote, George?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
I choose in favor, five in favor, none opposed. Julie, thank you so much. That's it.
Julie, you just are very neatly done, I really appreciate your work.
Very much so. I think our, our minutes are in great shape and this is our agenda, I think it's really helpful that this is set up that way. Helps us stand. Okay, anything else? Any town news?
Okay, I have, I just had a question.
Yeah.
How can we switch to a roll call vote?
Well, we, well, we did that, we started doing that when we were being virtual. I, I did, and I'd be happy to stop because it takes time. It takes time, I'd much rather not have to, but I don't even know if I can, because the people who are attending don't know how we voted, I don't know how, I don't know how that's reflected.
It doesn't matter to me, I'm sure.
I'd love to stop it, if we could, you know, but I'm just not sure.
The, the only reason why I brought it up is because they're doing it in select the meeting as well. And they do it because of the people that are on Zoom.
You gotta do it, I'm gonna search.
Yeah.
That's, that's exactly, yeah.
I'm coming in.
Yeah. Um, anything else going on in town? Yeah, I'm sure, yeah. Rich?
Just a quick question to Gary and then I gotta bring up something to the whole board or whatever. Down the Hammonds, you know what they're doing there in the package?
Don't.
Down the Hammond project?
No, that's Dawn, that's Michael Sales up there. Yeah. Yeah.
I believe that's his call.
I was just wondering why I drove by.
I was, I started, I said, really, you can pull them off?
Yeah, all right.
I know. Yeah, right? You were saying that it opens up the view, which is, is true, it would.
So you can see.
So down slope.
Musculaneous thing going in the parking lot at night.
Yeah, you know, where they cleared that and stuff, so you just go down slope and go towards the road. And there's a house right there, so my wife and I would drive by and the profile, so we're looking, we're up on Minet Hill, looking back, right? Looking down, you see, it's now naked ridge with a dozer on top, just with a lake behind it, like, well, there's a house right down below there, I wonder how they feel about all that. They have no game, really, I guess, but.
There used to be a house right there.
Yeah, it had daycare too. Yeah, no, they bought the water.
Exactly, you turn around on that driveway where you can't see the house.
Yeah.
From down below.
Yeah.
It's just.
Looks like it's gone. I actually had somebody the other day ask me, like, I'm supposed to know, I'm usually the last person to tell, I know. And it said, they're not doing a, putting a gravel pit in there. I don't think so.
Should've said yes.
Yeah, should've.
Sorry, geez. Why am I right up?
Oh, you wanted to say.
Yeah.
I was gonna, just wanna bring up, Colin Clark gave me a call, this is well over a month ago. And I know the last meeting, we were ten o'clock at night, and I was gonna bring it up and, and it wasn't the time to get into another discussion or whatever, but he had called me up because of a permit by rule that he'd gotten. I don't know the name of the people, but I know it was Elliot Thayer's project that we visited down on Great Pond.
Yeah.
Peter.
Yeah, Peter Stepp.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would agree with him that, and it's something I should have caught, but we screwed up, I think, on that particular project. He had this house down near the water.
Yeah.
That they tore down, they were gonna tear down.
Right.
And moved back to the greatest practical extent. Well, we approved what he wanted based on size to the greatest practical extent. But we really should be looking at what is there down by the water. That, when he tears it down, we should be allowing him to rebuild what's there to the greatest practical extent, and then expand sideways or backwards, whatever you want to do. But we shouldn't allow him to build a deck on the front or whatever, which this thing did have. It is kind of like he put together his project of what he wanted to do. And then we decided what, how far back can that get? But we really ought to be looking at what he has.
Oh.
And moving that back to the greatest practical extent. And then, based on what he can do after that or what he wants to do, that.
Pushes it back that much further.
Either, yeah, that goes further back, that doesn't, that doesn't.
It was, we screwed up on the deck part?
Well, the, the whole, the deck part really, because if he could have put that whole little, the original house, all the way back a hundred feet, and I don't know if it could have. It should have gone back a hundred feet, and then if he wanted a deck, it would go on the side. But we allowed him to essentially design this project so that the house itself, it's kind of like we allowed a deck to be put on the front of the camp when it wasn't there before. It's not to say it couldn't be, what's that?
It's not going any closer though, right? Than what he had.
No, not what he had, but we weren't trying, we weren't getting him back to the greatest practical extent for what he had. We did make it better in terms of setback, but that whole project, the size of that house that he had could have been back further.
Well, except that there was a monstrous boulder there.
No, that's, no, that was the longest, steep, steep, really.
Yeah, oh, it might have.
And then there was a shed right behind it.
Yeah.
That needs to be rebuilt.
Yeah.
It only had this much. Couldn't move, unless you had to move the shed, you'd have to cut that banking out, remember?
Yeah, 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 I, I do remember, but a deck is not, if somebody is adding a deck as part of their project, that should not, and it wasn't there before. It shouldn't be part of what we consider to be.
Part of the structure.
Part of the structure.
Original structure.
You know, it's kind of like, he designed what he wanted, we moved what he wanted back to the greatest practical extent. We really need to look at what the structure was. So I should have caught that, but there's not much we're gonna do about it now. Like you saw earlier, we make mistakes, we don't make them a second time.
What happened?
Pardon me?
Where was it located?
It was on Great Pond, that's on, no. Florida.
I can ping it in, ping it.
It was called, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, from the lake, Sonic is, I, I go there a lot in the summer. And I, I, I know the fact that I helped do that permit. They have a tea, a little tea house, right on, basically right on the water.
Yeah.
And so the, the, the hole is in a, the bubble level, the, the lot starts here and goes like this, all the way back. So behind the house, the home, there was a shed. And they were moving everything back, right almost body to the shed, I remember that. But I, I thought.
It's one of the houses that.
The house was one.
Yeah.
So Rich, it is, I mean, quite a bit of time's elapsed. I assume Colin and DEP aren't gonna do, take any action against.
They approved the PBR, they're not gonna take an action against town. I told them that we're diligent people, we made a mistake, or what I considered to be a mistake. You know, I can't speak for the board, you guys may say, oh, we didn't make a mistake, that's silly. But I told him, I, I thought we probably did, and he said, yeah, I was sure of caught that, but it's over and done with. We're not gonna make the front.
I just, you know. I remember being so focused on that big boulder and what was behind.
I mean, I had to move, he had to change that.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm sorry that we made this.
Further back.
Yeah, I'm sorry that we made a mistake, but to learn to go forward now, if we had another nearly identical situation, what would be the key thing for us to like focus on to say, okay, let's not, let's not repeat that same mistakes? What would, what would the trigger be for us?
I think the key is, we've got a non-conforming structure. That is grandfathered to tear down and rebuild to the greatest practical extent. So we look at what he has first, and then you get that size of that structure back at the greatest practical extent. Then whatever he can build without moving close to the water from wherever the.
Where they lose by it.
So it's kind of like, I look at it as, we don't let people design what they want, and then determine what the greatest practice. And as we go by what the structure was and move that to the greatest practice, then, then you figure out what else you want to do or can build.
So what was different about that project was, at least the other, there a, a structure got moved, a camp got moved back, it, it was, they were putting in new foundation or something like that and, and moving it back.
Yeah.
And there wasn't any proposal to add to the, you know, additional room or, or a deck or anything like that to the lakeside of the, and that's, that's what was different about this one, there was the proposal to put the deck on the lakeside of the rebuild.
Something that was torn down.
Yeah, right.
So you know when you have a deck before, you can never double deck?
You can build a deck, but if you, if you've got a non-conforming structure, you can't put it on the side toward the water. And if you didn't have a deck, we shouldn't be allowing a structure to, they want the deck, they should design a deck after you've determined how far that structure, the original structure can be moved back, so.
So if, when you, when you do, when you move it back and it gets beyond a hundred feet.
Yeah.
Then they put a deck on, they can do it. You know, because once you're back, let's say a hundred and twenty-five feet, you know, if the building goes back a hundred and twenty-five feet, you're out of the, you know, you're out of that hundred feet, you know? So they can put a deck back on, you know, for another twenty feet, so then they'll five feet.
Or if they wanted a ten-foot deck, they could reduce the size of their building that they torn down by ten feet and put the deck on the front. Still got the same square footage, but, so.
Pete, for the record, in terms of screw up, who screwed up? That was when the Rich and I, Sarah, but Sarah was brand new, you know, it was on, that falls on our shoulders.
I was there too.
Yeah.
I didn't think of it either.
Well, we, you know, by asking questions, I think, sometimes it makes applicants maybe anxious or something, but process is important, so I think by being open to asking questions about stuff and, and trying to approach it that way, you know, from a very, almost naively, you know, is a good way. As opposed to assuming that, hey, this must be okay, cause maybe, you know, we trust so and so.
The embarrassing part for me was that Colin said, look at page such and such of the Sherland zoning handbook.
Which, yeah, yeah, exactly, you kind of know that, right?
Yeah, it's like, once you raise it, oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Anyway.
If you may recall, that's the one where we got really focused on how do you measure the maximum height?
Yes, yeah.
We have, we're like changing that.
We did, great.
I have a few questions on subdivision ordinance.
Sure.
All right, so in that ordinance, we can't give wages to a minor subdivision, is that right? I mean, I don't know how you want to go about it, so I have a bunch of questions. And, you know, and I'd asked to get it before it goes to the slide board, so I can review it with somebody and ask some questions I have. And, you know, now it seems like it's after the fact, but I don't think it's after the fact yet. I don't think it's after the fact yet.
Cause you have questions about like how the revised ordinance is looking?
Yeah, I mean, can we, can we give waivers on minor subdivision? Uh the concrete and stone monuments on the corners, I thought we got rid of those. The setbacks from roads a hundred and fifty feet. And my biggest one is fire ponds. Are we required fire ponds in this thing?
See, I don't remember, like even for a minor?
If for either. And I found it somewhere in our older portion here, where it was based on the um uh comprehensive plan, and if if it wouldn't hold water, then there was a ten thousand gallon tank required to put in.
Cause I don't remember, we haven't talked about that.
It was the one.
Cause that would be, I would think people would put up a stink about that.
I would think so.
I was wondering, could, may not be practical for you, but I was wondering if you could jot your questions down, get it to Sheila, Sheila could forward it to us, and we can all review the ordinance and maybe you need an answer with sooner than two weeks, but maybe a next planning board we can discuss those questions and come up with answers or whatever.
Yeah, but we're gonna be giving it to the slide board before that.
So, could, cause if those, if that's like new stuff that we haven't had before, if those things.
Mm-hmm.
It it would be a wonderful. It's a fair thing to just ask Charles, and say, Charles, did, did, were these things introduced basically from state or from some other ordinance that we didn't have before, because we didn't have it before, I don't know why we'd be asking for it now.
And I gotta admit, I I couldn't open it, because I can't open documents when you forward it to me. So I'm running off an order as well, but I didn't, was able to forward this, the, these are the questions we come up with. So we don't have to handle it right now, I I think Rich's idea is good.
Yeah.
I'll get more accurate.
Let's try and get on it.
That would be helpful, cause I didn't pick up on that. Unfortunately, because I don't have it in front of me, I can't, can't quite figure it out, but.
No, I'll do what Rich says, so that's fine. I'm trying to locate it. But is there any way I can get that sent to me in a PDF? Or how do you do that, or do I just have to have to come here and have it printed for me?
It can be sent as a PDF, we just uh, um, let's see.
Oh, yeah, so the version I sent was a word, wasn't it?
No.
Cause that would be the one from Charles that we got?
Can make, can make a PDF, I will work.
Correct.
And you want to print it.
Let me ask you this, could you, could you please do that?
Oh, sure, I can do that.
Make the PDF and then forward it to, to you.
You made you.
Oh, yeah.
You're our personal secretary, David.
I will print it as a PDF and send it to everybody.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
My pleasure.
Boom.
It's so great when she says print it, it's not printed out.
It's just.
I'll print it.
Yes.
Or, I don't really need to print it, I just.
The Word document, when you want to print it, you can select if you wanna send it to a printer or not, you say print it as a as a Microsoft PDF and it makes a PDF for you.
Yes.
Correct.
Perfect, right? Good, good find, one of those things, cause that's nothing that seems like none of us.
Do that when you want to announce, you want after the, the.
Craig, what's what's the issue with the concrete, uh and they just don't last, or?
Well, they don't last, and and why are you gonna put them on every property, or what's, how's that word? They're hard to find, for one.
They're expensive.
They're expensive, they're gonna be buried three feet in the ground, is the way I took it. And, you know, then you drill on the top of it, and then you hit it with the surveying thing, and it's just, you know, just add more and more and more.
I can't, I can't say I've ever seen one.
Yeah, but um it's in there, it's, you know, so I think that was part of the state, I don't know, I don't.
Yeah.
Exactly, no, I'll get more details, and I'll write out my questions, and I'll send them out.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, good, good finds.
So the alternatives or whatever, it's usually like, usually pins or something.
Yeah, right, that's.
That's.
And then I go in and find them with metal detectors.
Metal detector, right.
They got the surveys cap on top.
Right.
Yeah.
His license number. His company name.
And it seems like that's what we've required so far, but I'm not sure why there would be reasons to change, but maybe there is, I just don't know.
I I think concrete, not monuments are a left door from a fight on day kind of thing, you know, when when surveyor standards require those.
Yeah.
My best guess.
In one of our earlier drafts that I have, it's like concrete or granite, we keep going.
Oh.
Yeah.
I think they vary on what I understand, right?
That'll last long along the road until somebody steals it.
Yeah.
Anybody that does, somebody that's surveyed, that's subdivision, no great. Expecting to have that back real soon.
Right, right, right?
You say that, it's true.
We have a granite marker, um, they had this, they are near our house, this was a granite marker.
Well, I'm trying to think, I think there was one on my wife's father's property down Scarborough, and but it was all corroded, and so there was some rebar in the middle, and that was about it, you know?
And that was concrete, not granite.
Right.
Right, that was not granite, no, that that was concrete.
Right.
So I don't even tell you guys what happened, just rebar. Sheila was there by herself. Everybody had gone, she was cashing out, she had money all over her desk, she had locked that door up there because she had money on her desk. I don't know why she carried her cellphone, but it's a good thing she did, she went in the bathroom. Locked herself with this little old axe, couldn't go.
Did she text you and say, Gary?
Called me at home.
Oh, wow.
Rescue her, I said, oh, if you didn't have your phone, it's been a long night.
Who was that?
Oh, my gosh.
Wow.
She got a video.
Yeah.
Frankly, that sounds like something I would do.
Well, you know, this one doesn't lock, she could be out, we got.
Yeah.
But she can't get back in there.
Yeah.
Oh, right. Wow. Way to, way to, way to go. Alright, is there any?
I'll see, I'm just gonna finish off.
Yeah.
This maybe was back in June, it'd still be light out.
I know, it's true, we've lost what, an hour and a half of daylight? We did, yeah.
I know, it looked awful dirty out there at seven o'clock at night, simply from that crowd, and from in here, it's like, geez.
If we're okay, I'd be willing to accept a motion to close the meeting.
I am motion to adjourn.
Adjourn, and do we have a second? Uh all those in favor?
Well, everybody.
All in favor, none opposed?
Yeah.
None, everybody?
I'm staying because I can't.
I know, I should have, I was kind of just doing it quickly. Alright, so ending that.